It's seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jolene, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson is absent. Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any resident's opportunity to address counsel on any topic of your choosing. I say residents, I mean any interested party. You don't need to be a resident. And is there anybody signed up for open forum this evening?
No one has signed up in the room.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in open forum this evening? I will also note, we do have a public hearing on the agenda for our first item on our regular agenda, which is for the issuance of bonds for multifamily housing. So if you are interested in talking on that particular topic, we will accept public comment during that period as well. Before we close open forum, is there anybody that would like to speak tonight? All right, not seeing anyone come forward. We will close open forum and bring the agenda to counsel. Counsel, for your consideration tonight is a consent agenda that consists of items 6A through 6N, and I will entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda 6A through 6N.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull 6F off of consent agenda.
Okay. Counselmember Husnick, will you amend your motion?
I will amend my motion that we approve consent agenda 6A, B, C, D, and E, and then G, H, I, J, K, N, L, and M, N, rather.
All right.
MN. So we're just pulling one item.
Okay, we have a motion for consent agenda, all items except item F. There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. First item this evening is former consent agenda item 6F, which is to approve the lease agreement of Twin City docks and lifts and JNT landscaping. Christina has this teed up from a staff memo perspective. Counselmember Roberts, this may be, it was your recommendation to pull this from consent. Do you want to maybe start conversation?
Yes. At the airports joint meeting with the airport commission, I'd asked the question about this land, Forestland Nursery property, and wondering who had initially paid for that piece of property. Since I've learned that it seemed like it came from a general fund, so I'm wondering why this lease would be then going to the airport fund and not the general fund.
Sure. I believe it's always been considered an asset of the airport, even though it was paid for through the general fund, like much of the airport land had been. And so for that reason, it had always been going there in the past. It wasn't budgeted there this year because previous staff thought that that relationship would come to an end. But we were able to come to terms on a two-year agreement with them.
Christina, or I don't know if this is Christina or Kevin question. Does approving the lease tonight lock us into which fund that goes into? If that is a question counsel wants to further explore, do we have some options that are kind of not tied to specifically the lease approval?
Sure. So the lease agreement does not specify where the funds go. Counsel can have this discussion during your budget process. Certainly you'll want to decide for the 2025 revenues where they go. You could make that decision in August and make it apply to the 2024 funds as well, since we won't have closed out the books by then. So there's no requirement to make that decision tonight.
Just going to speak from my own opinion. I'm open to having the conversation about where the funds should go, given kind of the genesis of this piece of land. But I would like to see this, approve the lease this evening. It's a parcel that has, we've had some questions related to the occupancy of that land compared to what's happening with the county project. We have all the parties in agreement. I'd like to see us be able to move forward with the lease. And again, happy to entertain a broader budget conversation in another meeting. But interested in feedback from others?
Yep. That's my opinion also.
Any other?
I'm complete in support of the agreement. I just think that for full transparency, that money goes to the, used to go to the general fund where that property was purchased out of.
There.
Disagree? Would you say that that's not?
I, so my, so it seems that this has come from the general fund. And I would like to have the opportunity to dig a little further into some of that history. There's a long history with that parcel. My broader concern is just, and it's a little bit easier in this conversation because these were unbudgeted dollars for 2024. There is some impact to these types of properties on the airport. And so I just want us to have a broader conversation and just make sure that we've got, you know, that we're in as much agreement as possible about where those are, where those funds are going, or at least we have the conversation about what does that mean for the airport. I just want to take a look at that budget and see what that impact would be. Again, it's easy in 2024 because that was unbudgeted. So I'm not sure it was a, I'm not sure I have a strong, long answer to your question. I'm not sure I have a strong opinion. I want to see kind of that full airport budget.
We're going to need to look at the history of that whole transaction, so. And it's a law, it's old, so.
Right.
Need to do that.
So with that, I would make a motion that counsel approve the lease agreement that's in our packet for the Twin Cities dock and lifts and JNT landscaping. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a friendly add out. Would you be willing to mention that that will be, where the funds go will be discussed at a later date?
So certainly can amend my motion to include with the understanding that there will be staff and counsel conversation about future funding and direction at that time.
I'll second.
Updated motion, updated second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda, our first item this evening is consideration of the whole city approval of issuance of bonds for multifamily housing and multifamily housing project and housing program. And Christina, I believe you are walking us through this.
Yeah, Mayor and counsel, I'll give a brief introduction. And then Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven, who's the bond counsel on this project, is also here to provide information and answer any questions. So Metis Development Group LLC is planning to rehabilitate five gone properties across the state. One of them is West Ridge Apartments here in Forest Lake. And so the city of Oakdale is going to be issuing the conduit bond financing to help them. But since you have one of the properties here in Forest Lake, you're being asked to give what's called host approval. It doesn't impact your bond rating or your debt ceilings or any of that. And then there's no cost to the city either. As you'll see in the resolution, the borrower, which is Metis again, agrees to cover any of our costs. Thus far, we've had, you know, the public notice that was in the Pioneer Press wasn't even billed to us. It was billed directly to Kennedy and Graven, and so we've avoided most of those costs. But if there were to be anything that showed up here, we would pass those costs on to be reimbursed by the borrower. And so the state and federal laws do require that you hold a public hearing on this tonight. Like I mentioned, we posted the notice of the public hearing in the Pioneer Press a couple of Sundays ago. I forget the exact date. We haven't, I have not gotten any written comments since that public hearing notice was posted. In your packet is a resolution to approve. That encompasses the host approval as well as that joint powers agreement with Oakdale. Again, since they're issuing this for all of the other cities. And with that, I think I will turn it over to Jenny and have her provide any additional information. And once she's done, Mayor, then open the public hearing.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven. I am bond counsel for Forest Lake as well as for the city of Oakdale, which would be the issuer of the bonds in this instance. And I think Christina really covered everything that's significant here. And that is really because the project, one of the facilities is located in Forest Lake. In order for Oakdale to issue bonds that will finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of that facility, they need consent from the Forest Lake City Council after the public hearing.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, any questions that you may have for Jenny or Christina before we open up the public hearing? All right. Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic? And we'll hold open for a moment. Jolene, do we have anyone online that would like to speak on this topic? If you are online and would like to speak in the public hearing, please raise your hand on Zoom so that you can be recognized.
Mayor, the one attendee online has not raised their hand at this time.
Okay. One more time, anyone else that would like to speak in public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close public hearing and bring back to counsel. Counsel, for your consideration is resolution 6102401. I would motion that counsel approves that resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Jenny, thank you for being here. Next for consideration is our audit presentation by Bergen KDB. And Kevin, I believe you're going to kick us off.
Yes, Mayor and city council, it's that time of year where we have 2023 audited financial statements. So here tonight is the partner in charge of the audit, Andrew Greis. He will go over the results of the audit. And after his presentation, he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, or I will, I myself can answer any questions you have as well. So included in your packet is the 2023 annual comprehensive financial report, the communications letter, and then the report on legal compliance. With that, I will turn it over to Andy and go from there.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council for having me here tonight. Here to present the audit results for the year ended December 31, 2023. The first slide that we have is our audit communications and our independent auditor's report. And just wanted to remind city council what our role is as your auditor. And that's to provide assurance on the city's financial statements that they are fairly stated in all material respects. We do that through our audit opinion. And that audit opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, and that's the best that we can give as your auditor. We also issue our report in accordance with government auditing standards. That report talks about our consideration of internal control over financial reporting. And we are required to provide any findings that rise to a significant deficiency or a material weakness level. There was one finding related to a lack of segregation of accounting duties at that significant deficiency level. Just to acknowledge that there's certain overlap in certain accounting functions, and it's a fairly common finding for cities, but just something that city council should remain aware of. The other reporting that we have is our report in accordance with Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor requires that we provide a report. If any instances of noncompliance come to our attention that are specifically addressed in the Office of the State Auditor's legal compliance guides, that includes certain state statutes related to contracts and bidding, deposits and investments, conflicts of interest, other miscellaneous provisions. And we had no findings to report in accordance with Minnesota legal compliance. The second part of the presentation tonight is just to highlight some financial communications. And we start by taking a look at the budget to actual results for 2023. City council adopted a balanced budget that called for $11.4 million in revenue and $11.4 million in expenditures, anticipating no change in fund balance for the year. When we take a look at actual results here on the next slide, actual revenues came in at $11.8 million, $460,000 better than anticipated. Expenditures came in over budget by about $171,000, and that resulted in a increase in overall all fund balance of $318,000. And we'll look at some of the details behind that here on the following slides. Going on to the next slide here with the financial communications, these charts and graphs are included in the communications letter that we provided. That includes all other required audit communication as well, but providing this financial analysis for some further perspective on some trend data and the operations here for 2023. And as we saw, looking at the budget to actual results, overall fund balance increased by that $318,000. The city does maintain a policy related to fund balance to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of 50% of the subsequent year's budget, which basically was right on here for 2023 when compared to the 2024 budgeted expenditures. Going on to the next slide, we look at the five-year history of general fund revenues. Back in 2022, it peaked with the coronavirus relief funds. And with those being spent in the prior year, we did see a decrease in overall revenue of about 9% or $1.2 million, mainly driven by that intergovernmental revenue category, which decreased by about $2.3 million related to that federal funding in the prior year. That was offset by an increase in property tax revenue with an increase in the levy. And then the other revenue category increased about $385,000. There were some unrealized losses that occurred in the general fund in 2022, and with better market rates and market conditions, that there was a significant increase in investment income for here for 2023. Going on to the next chart, this shows the sources of general fund revenue. And just comparatively looking at comparing 2022 to 2023, with that significant shift in intergovernmental revenue, we did see that proportion decline from 21% down to 5% here in 2023 with offsetting increases in the other categories, taxes, up to 79% of total general fund revenues. And then again, that other category increasing with the increase in investment income. The next chart takes a look at general fund budget to actual results, specifically the revenues. Again, those were $460,000 better than anticipated, mainly driven by investment income being better than anticipated with a conservative budget for investment income. All other areas are fairly consistent with budgeted amounts. The next slide shows the general fund expenditures here over the last five years. And there was an increase of about 4.5% or $529,000 here for 2023. The largest driver there was public safety expenditures, which increased about 8% or about $500,000 with cost of living increases and step movements for police officers, also fire wages. And the state fire pension contribution that's passed through the city also increased. General government expenditures increased about 7% with legal and technology costs increasing in 2023. Culture and recreation increased about $150,000. And public works decreased about $200,000 with some allocation, change in allocation of wages for 2023. And lastly, economic development expenditures decreased about $93,000 due to the city contracting, planning, and zoning services in 2022, but having that staffed in-house for 2023. The next chart shows the overall makeup of general fund expenditures by function, fairly consistent overall in how general fund expenditures are allocated by function. Everything within about one percentage point, with the majority of expenditures going towards public safety at 57%, followed by general government at 19% and public works at 11%. The next chart shows the budget to actual results for, on the expenditure side for the general fund, which again were about $170,000 or about 1.5% more than anticipated. Public safety being the largest contributor there, being $155,000 over budget with more salaries and benefits than anticipated. Economic development expenditures were about $100,000 under budget due to legal and other professional service fees being less. And then capital outlay was about $92,000 over budget due to the purchase of a dock, which was ultimately approved by city council and just was not included in the budget. The next slide, we start taking a look at the enterprise funds of the city, which operate a bit differently. These are on a full accrual basis of accounting. So you're going to see things like depreciation expense and really gives you the full picture of the related cost of operating these services for city residents. The water fund did have an increase in revenue, operating revenue, going from about $2.5 million to just over $3 million with an increase in rates. Operating expenses were fairly consistent, and that resulted in operating income of about $985,000. Also wanted to provide that figure factoring out depreciation expenses. That's a noncash operating expense, just to give her a better idea as to cash flow in this fund. And excluding depreciation, operating income of about $1.6 million for the year. Next, we'll take a look at the sewer fund. The sewer fund also experienced an increase in operating revenue with the increase in rates. Operating expenses also increased from about $3 million to $3.2 million. And as a result, operating income was $673,000 for the year. That was the highest in the five years presented. Excluding depreciation, operating income was at about $1.4 million for the year. The last slide that we have is a look at the tax capacity levy and rates at the city here for 2023. Total tax capacity was at $35.8 million, which is tied to market values within the city. That was the highest it's been in the five years presented. And that, it also increased at a greater rate than the increase in the certified tax levy, which went from $12.3 million to about $13.1 million. And because that, again, market value has increased at a greater rate than the certified tax levy, the tax rate decreased from about 41% down to about 36%, which is the lowest in the five years presented. That's a high-level look at our audit results and the financial analysis. And next, I'd like to open up for any questions.
Could you repeat that?
Kevin has a really great document that explains everything.
This is all kind of mind-boggling when you go through all of it.
Any, counsel, any questions or follow-ups that we would have? I ask this question every year, and I think I probably know the answer, but I still have to ask. So what are our only area, our only area of lacking, lacking internal control structures and segregation of duties? Do we think that in the near term that that is a, an item that we can overcome? Or is this just the nature of our size and is going to be the, the, I guess, maybe the juice wouldn't be worth the squeeze to try to cover that, so.
Yep, I was gonna go there with in terms of like a cost benefit analysis in terms of additional people really being needed in, at that level to try and reduce that any further. I think that significant deficiency level is a mid-level finding. It's something just to remain aware of because, you know, any changes in personnel, processes, you know, could impact that and could cause that to go to a more severe level. But I think, you know, mitigating controls are in place, compensating controls are in place to keep it at that mid-level finding. So I think outside of maybe evaluating additional, you know, employees in the finance department, some of that acts, some of the access needed at those levels are just overlapping and are needed for operational purposes. But again, just something to continue to monitor and be aware of.
Are we, are we out of line with our peer cities of this size on experience? Or is this a common finding you would have in a community of our size?
It varies. I think some, you know, you know, have different structures and, you know, may have third parties come in in terms of consulting and outsourcing, which, you know, provides sometimes some less access to perform multiple functions. But I would say that, you know, it's fairly common overall.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
One question for you, Andrew.
Sure.
The, on the water and sewer fund, the revenues of 980 some and 673, is that percentage-wise, kind of same question to our peers, about the same? Do you see anything too high or too low there?
That varies quite a bit as well, just based on operating methodology in terms of trying to finance capital improvements internally, avoid long-term debt financing for some of the obviously significant infrastructure, you know, needed to provide some of those utilities. So I think that does just provide more flexibility and, you know, ability to, you know, keep some of that interest expense away from those funds and using, you know, the internal reserves that are available for that going forward. So I would say probably more a question in terms of capital planning and what's coming down the line.
Sure.
Any other questions? And Kevin, you are looking for official action for us this evening to accept the audit report. Is that right?
Yes, Your Honor, official motion to accept the 2023 annual financial report.
Very good. Andrew, thank you for being here this evening. I would move that counsel accept the 2023 audit report as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda this evening is item 7C, which is consideration of resolution 6102405, which is to authorize sale of general obligations 2024A. And Kevin, this is you as well.
Yes, it's Mayor and city council. In front of you is a resolution to approve the issuance of general obligation equipment certificates. Back in 2023, a 10-year capital improvement plan was approved. And a part of that plan was a purchase of two fire trucks and two snowplow trucks. And the funding of those purchases were identified to be through the issuance of equipment certificates. These were purchases done a couple, or authorized a couple of years ago, but with all the delays going back to the pandemic. These fire trucks are now being delivered and money is starting to be incurred. So we're ready to issue those equipment certificates. So this is the first approval of many that is needed from counsel. This is authorizing our consultant, Ellers, to go and obtain the bids for that competitive sale process. If counsel approves that resolution tonight, I will then work with Ellers on some things in between. The next major step would be the city doing a bond rating call. That consists of getting a call from S and P to get our bond rating. Currently, our rating is at AA+, which is very strong. And really what that shows is if the higher the bond rating, the better interest rate that the city will get. So we're looking, I just got, been working with Ellers today. We're actually looking at doing that call rating on July 8. And I know in the packet it says that the tender schedule is to approve that winning bid at the July 8 meeting. But we would actually be looking at approving that bid at the July 22 meeting. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you have about the process or anything in the resolution as relates to this issuance of equipment certificates.
Thank you, Kevin. Counsel, any questions that we may have? This is kind of the final funding portion of purchase approvals we've already made, but certainly an opportunity for discussion or any questions.
What kind of interest are we looking at for these bonds?
Last time I had talked with Bruce at Ellers, we're looking somewhere around 3%. And it, once we, once we authorize the sale and we get, we're still waiting on the final number for where the plow trucks will come at, for what dollar amount we actually need for that, we can start looking at payment structure, how many years we want to go out to best suit, to suit that city. And that can affect the interest rate as well.
So Kevin, multiple step process. So tonight's resolution allows us to authorize, and then this would come back for counsel in the end of July. Is that right?
Correct. So then the resolution in July would be awarding the bid to all the, to the best bidder for the bonds. And then we would be looking at the city receiving those proceeds from that issuance about mid-August.
Counsel, any other questions? Sounds like we may be ready for a motion if anyone's ready.
This has been approved for quite some time. And so I make a motion that we adopt resolution 06-10-24-05, a resolution providing for the issuance of and sale of general obligation equipment certificates, series 2024A, I guess, in proposed aggregate principal amount of $2,390,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. All right, our next item is item 7D, which is a streetlight request. And Dave?
Good evening, mayors and mayor council. I come every, every couple of years with a streetlight request. Little background on this one. Last year, the association that, out at Pioneer Point, approached Public Works to request six lights be put up between Highway 97 and the development where the housing starts. Those six lights would meet about city standard, be placed, spread out. There's a picture of how that request, a little farther down in your packet. So I took that request in, submitted it to Xcel Energy, and their task came to about $30,000 to put those, those lights in. The HOA and myself recognized that was quite high for six lights. So they went back to the drawing board and, and as a group, they picked that one. So they went back to the drawing board and, and as a group, they picked that one light that's kind of right on that curve as you, you come in there. So they amended their request to have that one light put in, submitted that to XL Energy, and they came back with a cost of, well, two options. One, you can pay a little more at the beginning and your monthly payment is less. Or one, you pay a little less at the beginning and it's a little more per month. But basically, over a twenty-five-year period, it'll cost about thirteen thousand dollars for that light. Every streetlight that we don't own, that's not a blue light, we pay a maintenance fee on. So we pay about, little over a hundred thousand dollars annually just on our maintenance agreements with all the other lights in town. When, when staff evaluates it, the number one is if we have funding. And we don't have that funding this year, we're doing that, all the streetlight paintings downtown. So that's, that fund has about twenty-five thousand dollars for purchases like this or, or equipment repair. So we don't, we don't have that amount of money this year. And also, it's a mid-block crossing, so it's, it's one of those, it's not the highest priority. Typically, when Public Works reviews it, it's either at a dead end like a cul-de-sac or an intersection. That's why I'm here tonight, not that to overrule me or just to give me direction. Option is either to deny the request or to direct staff to put this into the twenty-five CIP for funding this streetlight. I've attached the request, location of the initial light spacing, and then the last one is where that one light would go. And then the cost sheet broken down on that final page. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Do, do we put an annual, maybe you mentioned this and I missed it. Is there an annual amount that goes into this fund to cover these types of requests? And is it just that that fund is exhausted or?
So typically, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in there annually to cover. We do some type of blue pole painting, whether it's a traffic light or streetlights or something that have to do with streetlights that we pay. That range is between ten to twenty thousand dollars a year. And then the rest of that dollar amount is if a car, you know, with no insurance, smokes one of our banner poles or one of our, our lights. I mean, then we have to repair it and we have to have that cash to repair it. Or if a globe breaks off or, or something like that. The project that we're doing with the streetlight paintings about seventeen, it'll come in around seventeen thousand dollars. If you approve that, you'd be pretty much maxed out of funds in June. And then I just don't want our fund to go over budget unless, you know, directed to. Or, and I've made them aware too that on typical funds like this, and even our streetlight policy does state that if we don't have funds, it gets moved, it can get moved to the next year. So it's, it's that option as well.
But they're expecting that if this is approved, it's not until two thousand twenty-five? Is that common understanding?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I told them we needed to come to council because we don't, we don't have the funding for it. And we're looking for, you know, either direction to put it in next year's, to be put in that streetlight fund. You remarked why that extra five thousand or six thousand dollars is in there for this streetlight.
And then if this were a new development, what would be our, what would be the required, like, lighting scheme that we, we would require? Would it have been all six is, is, ultimately what I'm getting at is the one that's requested, where does that fit into our standard if it were a new development?
So typically, if they were developed Pioneer Point today, we'd require them to put everyone, the developer could put all the lights in from ninety-seven throughout the development. Then we would just take on the maintenance fees.
And would that have been about six lights or like?
Yep, that's, the spacing is about a hundred and fifty feet apart there. The lower lights, not as, I mean, not the big huge coves. So you need them a little bit closer together, especially just how that street winds, winds through there. You know, the other option is, is these can get added onto as well. So if you have one, if the request comes in five years to add another one, they can just daisy chain these lights on. It's just a pretty large expense right off the bat to put all six of them in.
I can appreciate why it's our answer, we're not going to do six. I'd like to see us do one. I just, I'm, I'm struggling with not doing one, but also appreciate the fund balance impact. And this essentially takes, this one request would take about half of that, so open to feedback.
And there's been other requests out there too, that street lighting is a big thing.
This is, I mean, Councilmember Husnick brings up a good point. This is a topic where we very much could, you know, be spending a lot of money on streetlights if we don't have some pretty strong control over what projects we greenlight.
And we do have a policy that Director Adams mentioned. And maybe we need to walk through the criteria and why he scored it low too.
That would also be helpful.
Funding, right?
That would also be helpful.
Criteria.
Yeah, I mean, we've had requests in the past too that if they're not dead-end or intersection, they're, they're mid-block, you know, or too close together, they get, you know, approve or denial. This, this is in that area because there's, just to your point, it's not completing the street off. You are putting one in there, so you're not technically doing the whole thing. And then does it just become a pattern of every year we're getting asked to add another light on? So that's, that's what you run down to. That's why we review these streetlight plans when all new developments go in and all that or anything commercial to make sure we're grabbing these streetlights when we can. So at least the city doesn't have to pay that upfront cost of the installation, you know, the maintenance fee is. When you add up all of them, yeah, it adds up to a lot. But you can save a big chunk of money by having them put in initially.
Yep.
That's it, go ahead.
I, so I, this seems like a pretty simple ask. I'm familiar with that stretch of the road. It is pretty dark. I appreciate the neighborhood and realizing what six costs, then coming back and say, you know, at least one. That, that neighborhood pays more than its fair, fair share of property taxes in this city. And so I, I don't see why we would not approve this.
It does seem like one is. Dave, I'm, I'm looking in your packet for the criteria. Where? I just wanted to give that another, another look, and I am not seeing them.
No, it's not included in the packet.
Can you just talk us through?
In the background section of the report, I see the policy is missing. But the end of the last, end of the first paragraph, the topics.
Traffic hazard, intersections, dead-end streets, and mid-block locations.
So current, so yeah, in that policy, it says that with current developments, the city Forest Lake would pay for installation of an approved streetlight, provided installation money is available. The city will also pay for the monthly electric charges if the light meets the streetlight criteria. But there are no funds available for installation in the current fiscal year, then the streetlight will be placed on a schedule for fund availability. If the applicants desire, they may pay for the installation charges associated with the light, and the city can take over the monthly electric charges. And yes, I was asked then if they would be willing to pay that up. And they said they wouldn't be requesting the streetlight if they had the money to put one up, so.
So in this instance, because they don't score, score high on the criteria, then it goes into based on fund availability? Is that right?
Yep. Number one is traffic hazard, that would be it. And then number two is intersections, three is dead-end streets, four is mid-block locations, and then five is data requests. It go, it scores them if they're multiple streetlight requests all at once.
Do we have other requests in? I think Councilmember Husnick mentioned some, or is this the only one?
No, but typically, when you have one request, then we'll get a bunch of them.
Yeah, that's.
Tends to happen in that direction.
I'm just, I, I, this is an easier answer for me to hold tight to the policy when it's, you know, there's other lights and it's maybe a lack, it's maybe, it's a mid-block request, but there's a light here and a light here. Here we've got an entire neighborhood where it's, there's none. That's what makes the, it seems like the, the, the exception is warranted, especially if we've come from, you know, a request of six down to one and in a time when, you know, twenty twenty-five conceivably, there are some funds available for it. So I'm leaning towards a yes unless someone has.
Yeah. This is gonna, the street lighting is a big thing. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
And we gotta figure out some way of getting going on it somehow.
Right.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, because this is new to me, so I want to make sure we understand. So if you say, if the council says yes tonight, then we still have to go through the budgeting process. And if we get, if we get a bunch of these requests, they still aren't getting their streetlight unless they score high enough, right? I just want to make sure that people aren't leaving the room tonight with the wrong perception either. So is that, is that correct on how the policy works?
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling for a yes, only because I know I, I want streetlights everywhere. But for me, it's a struggle because it's ranked so low. And that if we have other people asking for streetlights, at what point, is, is it going to be a floodgate? At what point are we going to make everything an exception? And then it just continues to go down that path. So if, if we, if it's a yes, that I would like to see it in the budget. Because as we continue down every single year, we're like, yes, to everything, yes. And then we get to budget time and we're like, no, this is, this is overwhelming, this is too much. And so I would, since I'm struggling for a concrete yes today, I would prefer this conversation to maybe be more embedded within the budget conversation of maybe originally put it in the budget, but then highlight be like, hey, remember back in June, we talked about the streetlight, here it is in the budget, this is what it would look like. This is what the implication of that would be. I feel more comfortable with that since it ranks so low.
Yeah, you would, you would see a spike in that streetlight fund. And Kevin would highlight that as you remarked of, that's why that's in there. So I mean, that, that could be a point of discussion at that point. And if more requests come in, that dollar amount may change. You know, if I bring more to you and you say, yes, put that in the budget. And then you might have four streetlight requests at thirty thousand dollars. And then that, that might be the time to decide, yeses and noes.
Yeah, because at the other side of that coin, we gotta be thinking about the fact that we're going to be at a fifteen percent.
Right.
Levy as it is, and try to explain that.
So, so it, is it, so is it possible to have this, rather than us ad hoc approve these, is what I'm hearing that instead we would consider them kind of all at one time as part of the budget? And then we've got potentially multiple requests and their scoring, as well as other competing projects like painting streetlights, right? So we could paint fewer and install more, right? So that, so we could make a, rather than making a one-off decision, make a, kind of an overall decision based on overall funding?
Yep, that's possible. You can't waver too much because we're trying to get on a five-year cycle of repainting the streetlights. And if we take too much away, then we'll get off on that schedule and.
Yeah.
Try to get herself on a routine schedule where they don't get all rusted out and stuff. So I, I think there's a, there's some wiggle room, but not, let's just not paint anything this year. And then, then our schedule gets thrown off a year and.
Well, and I think that forces us to make that decision, right? Of if we are committed to that five-year, you know, there's reasons why we, we've said we need to do that, then we also need to fund it and need to hold all things constant. That, so that's a, so when is the, is that a, like, mid-summer? We're not, it seems like we're not too far away from needing to have that conversation, right? So us not making a decision tonight is going to potentially delay a decision for, at least through preliminary.
Budget workshop.
Preliminary levy.
But still, you know, so that still keeps them on schedule for next year if that was the plan anyways.
I would rather revisit at that time. Do we have other requests that are kind of pending?
Not at this moment. There was some that cleared out last year. One was just when they hang on a power pole, you don't pay any installation, you add just a light, you know. So those typically get approved at administrative level just because they're at an, they hit number one on criteria. It's an intersection, it's typically like a bus stop or something like that, that they just get approved. But these ones that cost that you're running electrical line and, and putting up infrastructure is more of a question. I guess all I'm looking, if, if this is a definitely maybe, then we can add that on to the budget. I'd still like if something between now and then, if there are absolute denials or I'd still like to bring them just so we can try to flush some of them out if we do get a rush. Otherwise, we're gonna take an hour at a budget meeting talking about streetlights. And I'd rather just get the ones flushed out that we want to keep or the ones that we don't, if that's all right with council.
And I did have a conversation with a resident earlier this year and gave him a copy of the streetlight policy. So I don't know that it's gotten turned in yet, but.
Right.
So there could be that opportunity, but there's more.
Yeah, I would, I would, I, I think making this decision along with the budget is probably the most prudent to do. It's, this is, these requests come quite frequently. And it's tough when it's a, it's low scoring, but it's low scoring because of the way the, the development went in, right? Like, this was not the way we would develop today. And that's, it's bridging that gap that's happened many, many years ago is what's so challenging. And we have unfortunately a fair number of pockets in the community where that is the case. So let's make a budget decision. I would move that we table this decision tonight until after we've had a future budget conversation. Is there a second on the table?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we have this tabled. Okay. Next for consideration is seven E, request for proposal for public works facility space needs study. And Christina?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, I put together in your packet requests for proposals for a space needs study or assessment out at the public works facility. This is a project that's been in your tenure plan. The previous administrator had put together a proposal last fall, but it included much more than what's in here. I've really pared it back to, to kind of take these things in smaller steps. It included master planning for the site that could be a park in the future. It included work with our, our city engineer to get utilities out there. We already know the utilities are running down the property line due to serving the Washington County Environmental Center and a few other things that got taken out. So I'm bringing this forward to you now because there is money in the two thousand twenty-four budget to do this study. So you don't have, this doesn't have to be a budget discussion item for, for twenty-five. I also think, you know, this will give you some data to help you make some decisions about where to plan for that public works facility replacement. I did tour the site last week and, you know, of the four communities that I've served in, it is by far the worst condition I've seen for a public work staff. So I hope that we can gather the data that's necessary to help you decide which way to move forward. As you'll notice in the RFP, it, it, you know, maybe there's some way we could rehab things out there. And so we want them to do an assessment of the buildings and see where the shortfalls are and put together a budget of what that might cost to improve that to our needs and also then compare that to a new facility. And, and that's, that's some of the data I think that I hope can help the council make the decision on how to move forward on this. I think I'll just leave it at that and maybe answer questions. I know that we got some public comments. I kind of noted, I think, you know, some fair feedback or maybe we'll take some, some language out so that we're not predetermining the outcome of things. But as I had noted previously, also other areas that I respectfully disagree with. So we'll take direction from council tonight on, on whatever changes otherwise that you might like to see to this RFP. The hope is to get it issued out this week and back next month and then start working with a stakeholder group of our staff and, and working through that process with the consultant and, and giving them, you know, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days to bring that back to you. Probably with that timeframe would be, you know, early next year that you would see that. But again, my understanding is this public works facility is at least a couple of years out. So nothing is really impacted by not getting it wrapped up this year, and we can encumber most of the funds for this year, so.
Whoa, sorry about that. Thank you, Christina. Counsel, let's just open it up. I know that there were, there was a kind of a follow-up that Christine had provided us that had some, some suggestions for possible changes. I'm open to changes if it could go anywhere on, on a number of topics. So wherever we want to start, I'm, I'm open for, let's just start the conversation. Feedback?
Well, I guess the big thing is we're, we're looking at whether or not we really want to hire somebody to do this study. And so what they would do is basically tell us what we need. There wouldn't be any building specifications or anything like that, I would assume.
It's really like blocks on a map. It's really like blocks on a map, if you will. We know, you know, we know the site where it's going to be. So it's just kind of spacing that out really at a high level, like I say, blocks, based upon discussion of, you know, how many office spaces or training rooms and bays and all of that kind of stuff that we give feedback on that we need. And it's based upon our growth. And, you know, I know that was one of the questions typically I would say you go out till you're, at this point now, we have numbers for 2050 from that council. I don't know how you project growth beyond that, um, right? That's, there's some limits to how far you can go. But you also know that you have a large piece of property out there. And so if you can at least plan for 2050, maybe you also plan for where it can easily be added on to the building in the future and stuff. But cost estimates, you know, an analysis of the building, where is it deficient? What, what kind of code issues might be there? What are we behind on? What would it cost to bring those things up to code if we wanted to stay in our current facilities? Maybe there's an opportunity to add a second floor, I don't know, and move the offices up. But I don't know what the answer is, right? That's why you go through this, um, process. But, but then the idea is you turn this information over to the council and you can weigh those options in helping you decide how to move forward.
Look at the proposal would be my thing. I mean, find out exactly what that would be like and
Yeah, I, so
Money we're looking at.
Yeah, when we look at our tenure plan, this project has a significant kind of near-term footprint on our tenure plan. And so I appreciate Christina moving this forward and we have budget dollars allocated for this. I also appreciate the reduced scope and bringing it down to something that is likely to be much smaller than what we have budgeted. Um, I agree with the changes, the scope that were made. At a high level, I support this, but again, I think there were some very specific comments of, you know, folks had thoughts on, happy to entertain.
Go ahead.
I'm comfortable with this. Christine, I think you mentioned that you, not so long ago recently, went through the same process in a former city. And so you have that experience and that's basically how you came up with this. So I'm, I'm comfortable going forward and be interested to see what we get for pricing on something like this.
Any other points of feedback or questions on the study? Or the, I'm sorry, the request for RFP for a study? Sounds like we may be ready for a motion if anyone's ready?
I think everybody's in agreement that we want to look at the proposals. So I motion to authorize issuance of a request for a proposal for a public works facility assessment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of ordinance 738, which is to amend city code 31 dot 55 dash 31 dot 5, or 23159, the Airport Commission. And Christina?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we had some discussion on this last month and got some feedback from council. And so I brought to you a new ordinance for your consideration tonight to adopt. That would amend three sections of the airport's commission code. The first is in the membership, membership section, which we talked about last time, that in addition to the five appointed members, there would be one non-voting ad hoc representative from the city council that would be appointed. They can participate and attend all the meetings, um, in, in whatever manner the commission may participate as deemed appropriate. You know, last week we had some question about whether or not the non-voting member could, um, hold one of the offices. I think this language allows them to decide what that level of, of participation is. Last week also, um, at the airport commission meeting, as you know, they appointed a chair, vice chair and secretary. So we're adding those, those two positions, vice chair and secretary into the code. In the next section about, um, meetings and reports, last month we had talked about making it bi-monthly. There's still the language in there that allows them to meet more frequently if something comes up. But the bi-monthly more accurately reflects that they're meeting every other month. Another one of the requests, um, from council member Erickson at the last meeting was to add some language about an airport manager. And the language that you see in 31.58 very closely resembles what's in the South St. Paul ordinance for their airport manager in their airport commission. That's where that language comes from. I know that we have a secretary who takes minutes, but this is just, we got to make sure that somebody on staff is keeping track of those minutes and they're, they're in our record. It's been, been challenging as a new person to try and dig all those out and there's some gaps. I struck out the language that the minutes should be furnished to the city council at a following meeting. That's not a practice that you've done here. It is kind of old school that some cities have done with all of their commissions. But since that hadn't been the practice I observed, I think we should just take it out rather than create confusion. Um, and then lastly, and 31.59, which is administrative control, I just added a, a sentence that says, "The city council shall appoint an airport manager who shall oversee the daily operations to ensure compliance with local, state and federal regulations." I want to be really cautious about not getting too detailed in our code. You know, that what, what specifically any of our positions do, whether we're talking about it here tonight or at the next meeting with respect to parks, we should keep those specific duties in a job description, not in code. Because if you think about every time you want to change duties or reporting relationships or whatnot, you don't want to have to go through the process of update, you're updating your city code. So I tried to find that, that balance there with that language. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Open up, council, any questions that you may have, comments?
Did we get a chance to see that language? I missed something for the Fleming Airport.
See what language?
About the, uh, the language in the code for the South St. Paul Airport.
That was in the packet last time where I had all of those other examples from other cities, yeah.
Back on.
Yep.
So I, I support the, the ordinance that's in front of us tonight. And I think this makes some structural adjustments that have been needed. You know, we, we talk about the, we reference in here the airport manager. And I, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I think it, it references that we will appoint an airport manager, talks about their role in maintaining some of the, the minutes and kind of what happens at the airport commission. I think that's all appropriate. I just, I just want to say that, um, we're having, there's, there's, there's been some conversation around role of the airport manager and what is that staffing going to take? I have some heartburn over, and I recognize there's been some near-term airport activity that has really increased staff time in, in the near-term. I would hope that when we are in ordinary operation and things are functioning as we need them to function, that we're able to identify that that role really isn't more than, certainly more than a quarter of a full-time person. And I would hope that we could get something that is a fraction, a fraction of that. We don't need to split those hairs tonight, but, um, I, I just need to keep saying that as we're considering what is this role and how much is it going to take. And again, that's going to, that's going to increase at times of projects and it's going to decrease at other times. But if we were to, you know, even that out over three years, I would like us to see that we're at, you know, maybe an eighth of a person or something that's just, um, kind of appropriate for our, our activities. And so again, that's a conversation for a different day, but I know it keeps coming up. And so I just wanted to highlight that. Otherwise, everything that's in this tonight seems to be what we've previously talked about and we've had some agreement on. So I'm happy to support it, but also open to hearing other comments.
Yep.
Any other points of feedback or concern? This is
I, I agree with you, Mara. I mean, we had a really good situation here until Dan left. I mean, he did a great job out there and, uh, um, keeping everybody in line and taking care of the pumps and all kinds of. He was taking care of the, the, uh, farming leases and all kinds of things out there. So, um, I think that's the role that we're kind of looking for is something that, in that line, some of the, from staff. The last thing you want to do is ever have anybody out there that has a direct contact with the airport. An example would be a hangar owner, for instance. It'd be the last thing you'd want to do. And so, um, a good example would be, I don't want to pick on Dave too much, but he's out there a lot. And he's cutting grass and taking care of broken lights and all kinds of things.
I think Dave declines the job offer.
No, it's just an example of a staff
I don't want a resignation on my desk.
No, it's just an example of a staff member being out there a lot. So that's, you know.
Any other points of discussion on this? All right. Ready for a motion if anyone's ready?
I will make a motion that we approve ordinance 738 to amend city code 31 dot 55 dash 31 dot 59 regarding the airport commission.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Dave, are you still with us? All right.
Yeah, he'll, he'll be talking to me later, I'm sure.
He's talking me down.
Lock the doors. All right, moving on to item 7G, which is the award the contract for taxiway A3 and taxi lane Bravo, um, extension project. Silas, we've got you here tonight. Thank you for another trip to Forest Lake.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Bain and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to, opportunity to continue the discussion from the May 28th meeting about the proposed taxiway A3 and taxi lane Bravo extension projects proposed at the airport. So there was two questions posed at the council meeting on May 28th during the discussion that I wasn't able to answer at that time. One of them was in regards to what, uh, what happens with the state funding appropriated for the taxi lane Bravo extension project? If council elects not to move forward with taxi lane extension in that area? And then with the, if there's a construction schedule, if there would be any impacts to local events that are planned? So I'll start with answering the first question in regards to impacts to state funding for the project. Administrator Hant and myself had a meeting with MINDOT aeronautics staff today to ask that question in terms of if city council elected to not construct, uh, the taxi lane Bravo extension to the north and look to pivot to the south, what impact that would have to the funding that's been appropriated for state fiscal 2024? And MINDOT stated that if the project does not move forward as, uh, as planned, that Forest Lake would have to, uh, request funds in state fiscal 26 then to construct taxi lanes to the south, that they scored the project as is. So if there's any change to the scope of the project, Forest Lake would then have to go back to MINDOT to request, uh, funding for taxi lane, uh, extension, extensions to the south. And then the other question was in regards to, um, if the, if the contractor would provide a draft schedule so we could determine if there would be any impact to local events. We understand that there's a fly-in breakfast scheduled for August 17th, uh, with the EAA. And then also with hangar one, there's a wedding planned for September 21st. So I reached out to the contractor and they've stated that, uh, as the schedule sits right now, they would plan to have all construction completed before the fly-in breakfast on August 17th and not have any impact to the two local events that are on schedule. So I'd be happy to address or answer any other questions or, or comments that, uh, any members of council may have about the project.
Thank you, Silas. Council, let's just open it up. Any questions that you may have?
Everybody knows where I stand on it, so.
I, um, so helpful to hear MINDOT's thoughts on pivoting these dollars to the south. And also just want to acknowledge everyone's kind of patience as we've kind of taken a pause to ask some additional questions and dive a little deeper. I think our conversation, um, at the airport commission was incredibly helpful. Just getting additional information, it just helps make a better decision. You know, I, I personally, I come back to, we've had a long-term airport layout plan and this has been part of the plan for quite some time. And that matters. And I think, you know, as we're looking at final approval, it's good to do the double check of is this the next best move? I am happy to support this tonight, but also want to leave room that the, um, we, we're, we're saying multiple things around what is our goal for the, these hangers that are going to be constructed to the north? And on one hand, we talk a lot about commercial, um, but we know that the demand is for, you know, more recreational hangers. And so we're saying different things. I think we just need to acknowledge and allow for some of that. There is some unknown there. But also I, I'm comfortable making the, I'm comfortable supporting this tonight because I think ultimately we also, we don't need to make that decision before this particular, you know, we, we move this project. There is some flexibility in what actually goes into those lots, I believe. And I think it's maybe just best to acknowledge that, um, there is, there seems to be both demand for, you know, more private hangers, but also some, a lot of interest on the part of the cities and, city and others in having that be more commercial. And those things don't necessarily align, but I'm comfortable with that ambiguity personally. Certainly welcome hearing from others and seeing where others may be.
I think that, that could be determined along the way here. I, that's kind of a mixed up thing in any ways, so that could certainly be determined.
I, I think, uh, just because there's money out there, taking taxpayers' money like this without a real plan is being bad stewards of, of the taxpayers' dollars. I realize they're not, they're not property taxes, but they're fees. A fee is a tax, it's a user's fee, it's just like a sales tax. We really have no plan. We're building a road or a taxway to nowhere, uh, to four hangers that, um, when we have opportunity, which more revenue coming in to going to the south. And so I, I just think it's, it was clear on, at the last meeting that there really is no plan. We don't have any idea about a back road to this, to actually access these build, these, these potential hangers. I think it's poor planning and, and just because money's there for the taking doesn't mean we should take it.
Interesting. Councilmember Valento?
That I'm, I'm supportive of the project. I think we've come this far looking at it and discussing it. And, um, even though the plan isn't 100%, I think we are getting there through these conversations. And, um, I think by having those, having more questions, it, there's going to be more answers. And I think we'll have a plan going forward and we'll figure that out soon, sooner rather than later. And I think too with this project, we aren't, people have been concerned about going south. But this project, even though we're going north, it doesn't mean that we're necessarily not ever going to go south. That's, that is clearly a want and a desire. And I think, um, I wouldn't want to bypass this opportunity and then not do any project this year or next year for the sake of simply wanting to go south. And, um, so I'm supportive of this project.
Any other points of discussion? So on our agenda tonight is to award the project. I would motion that council award the contract for taxiway A3 and taxi lane Bravo extension project to dress a contracting for 631,028865 as indicated in our staff memo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Roll call vote, can we do a roll call vote, Jolene?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Nay.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. And 3-1, and motion is approved. Silas, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is consideration, um, of a donation and resolution of 6102404. And
I thought you could just read it, Mayor.
I can read it. Let me get there, apologies. Forest Lake Lions Club has generously donated $2,600 for the purpose of funding the Forest Lake Senior Center and supporting senior center activities. And also a donation of $1,500 was made for the purpose of supporting the, um, Future Veterans Memorial. And with that, I would move that council approve with gratitude resolution 6102404. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion's approved. Thank you so much. We do not have any discussion items this evening, fairly lengthy work agenda. So we're going to move right into staff updates. Angelina?
No updates this evening.
And Kevin?
No updates.
Christina?
Just watch your emails, you know, next week is your interview process, obviously for the city administrator. We may cancel the work session on Monday, um, just because I know you've got a heavy lift next week and there's nothing, in my opinion, that's really pressing that we need to do. So, um, watch for updates from me on that by the end of the week.
Very good. Thank you, Christina. Amanda?
Yeah, uh, on that note, um, one thing just to keep in mind, you, all day Thursday, the 20th, is booked and that evening. Um, and then also Friday morning, we do have that period blocked off as well. It's unclear if that will be needed, but we want to make sure that we have that noticed as a meeting in the event that council wants to sleep on it before they make a decision on Friday.
And we have that, do we have that starting at 9:00 AM on Friday, the 21st?
Jolene, is it 9:00 or 9:30?
That is the time we have slated.
Yeah, 9:00 AM.
Perfect. It hasn't been officially noticed yet though, so if we need to
We've, we've got time between now and next week. We just have to give a three-day, it'll be a special meeting.
Yep.
Second thing for me is cannabis. So just looking for some direction from council on
City administrator to cannabis.
Yeah, just a nice little segue. I had nothing, so I just popped right over.
I had nothing, so I just popped right over to cannabis. For, for, obviously there was another sort of round of legislation that went through this last legislative cycle. There's a lot of policy decisions, there's a lot of just general information, and then there is sort of the staff component of building out whatever it is that council wants. What I'm wondering if council can give some feedback tonight in terms of, do you want sort of cannabis one oh one, a summary of where we've been and where we are? Do you want to just sort of jump to the, what we need to sort of decide as a city? From a timeline perspective, there is a lot of information floating around out there, frankly, a lot of misinformation floating around out there. At this point, it does not appear as though there will be any licenses issued until twenty twenty-five. That said, there are things in the statute that make it possible, but when you put all the pieces together, not really conceivable because of the hoops that have to be jumped through in the timeframe in which those, that has to happen. So I don't anticipate that there is going to be anything that needs to happen this summer. At the same time, this is probably a process that requires, we won't, we aren't able to license, but sort of the registration and if we want to zone this and thinking about this, not just from a retail perspective, but we're talking about manufacturing and cultivating, growing those types of businesses as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces. So my question to council is what would you like? How do you want this information?
I think if we can get a history on it, on it about where we've been, because that the last conversation we had was like, I feel like a year ago.
Oh, it's at least that.
Yeah, so, and at that, at this point, I remember it, but I vaguely remember it. So I think it'd be, at least in my opinion, it would be helpful for me to just have that little, that recall of what we talked about and then what's out there in moving forward.
I think it'd also be helpful to understand and have clear visibility to the regulatory landscape, if that's known, because I, it'd be helpful to walk in or to be able to know, here's what's within, here's what we can control. And then for some of those things that we typically would have controlled under either tobacco or alcohol, that's not necessarily the case here, but just to understand what are some of the guardrails that are in place? And I guess what, where do we fit within that structure of the regulatory framework?
Do you envision this first as a work session or...
Yes.
Okay.
Right?
Like, I mean, not at a council, at a council work session meeting. Obviously it'd be a discussion item, but do you envision it as a work session meeting?
It could be a discussion item. I mean, if this is something we need to, you need to feed to us in small pieces, if we were to do it in a, I mean, I'm happy to use like this time in a discussion item as well if our work session agendas get booked.
Okay.
The staff meeting on this last week was two hours, I think, for Amanda to update us, so that's why I'd be worried about putting it in on a regular agenda.
Yeah.
It's a long PowerPoint. I do have pictures if that helps.
Does it also, I mean, part of this is, I don't know what I don't, I don't know what I don't know, right? So do we, how, I mean, are there zoning, to the extent we're making zoning considerations, is that timing like of the essence and we need to be moving fast on some of those items? I'm, that's where I'm a little, I have a blind spot.
I think what's helpful, frankly, from a staffing, for a staff perspective, is what is council's sort of general policy around cannabis? There's obviously cities that are trying to prevent this from being in their city as much as possible, right? However they can prevent these businesses from coming in, they're going to do that. And there are, on the other spectrum, there are cities who are welcoming this and they want to create, you know, opportunity in this industry. I think the threshold question for, for staff really is, where is council on that spectrum? I think that question is probably easier answered from, from you, once I've given you the history of cannabis and what we can do, right? What, what does this look like? What do these businesses look like? Because I think otherwise it's hard for you to know if it's a green light or a red light.
That's what we have to look at. You've got to get all the information, you know? My...
I mean, I think you're, I think one of the questions you're asking is, are we looking for this to be the prohibition, like, you know, Ohio model of prohibition of like never here, or it's like the Utah model of prohibition of never here, or are we Las Vegas, right? Like you're, like, where do we want to be? Maybe Las Vegas is the wrong example, but, but like, we're on that spectrum, right? Like...
Because the, the package looks different, you know, that staff will build for you depending upon what you want.
So as, do you have enough guidance and has a final decision been made from the state level to give you enough guidance to give us and the public? Because I'm getting a call at least once a week or something, wanting to know what it is. And so maybe welcoming or inviting the public to be a part of this conversation. I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's our really ultimate decision, but really it's, it's the public. We need to see what they will think and what they want. It's not about what we want. And so some kind of an open meeting to discuss that, I think is, is important because it's just, it's not really our decision. We want to know what, what the residents want.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it will be, it would be best to be on a regular city council agenda, so then more public exposure for it and maybe we do a little bit more public noticing around, you know, come if you want to weigh in, come if you want to. And we could even do a public hearing if we, if you want to, just so you can sort of, the purpose of the public hearing would just be to gather public perspective.
Yeah.
But to answer, Councilmember Roberts, answering your original question, yes, there is enough information from the state at this point that I think I can fill in the four corners of the box. What's, what still has to be built out is a lot of the things that the Office of Cannabis Management needs to do, which are sort of the granular rules. But in terms of what this sort of looks like, we have a pretty good idea at this point.
So maybe it's a two-part thing where it's an education to us first and then the public's invited in, I guess.
Yeah, I, I like that and I like the, maybe the public invited in is maybe more on a traditional workshop night and maybe with some additional, you know, feedback, right? It's cannabis night, so send something out to the chamber, you know? I, I mean, really, like, there is, there are considerations that we, you know, we should hear from and, and I suspect if, you know, if that word gets out and we have that opportunity before we are, you know, kind of making some of these initial decisions, it would be good.
So I appreciate you bringing this up because it'd be nice if we, the sooner the better, not get flat-footed like we did when it became legal and that was a small window and next thing we don't have an ordinance for or against it. And so if we could have something in place as close to January first as possible, it'd be ideal.
I don't see any reason why we can't have this done by the fall. I mean, I really, and frankly, if I'm, if you, if the city decides that they want to be more open, that's helpful for people who are, you know, prospective business owners to understand what are their rules going to be if they want to come here.
Right.
So yes, not a problem. I'll work with Christina to come up with a, a date to do the education piece, which will probably be about an hour of the two hours?
Yeah.
And that's a separate work session.
It should, I think it'll be about thirty minutes, but it, there's just a lot and I think it's just really helpful to understand, this is a, this is a big one, you know, kind of think about if alcohol was started from the very beginning and all of the facets of that, this is very, is very similar. So there's just a lot of things to think about.
Also, just helping us look around the corner, it would be helpful to understand, what do we need to know, what's not changeable, right? There are things that we can change over time and then there's going to be certain things that because of the nature of what we do and we're talking about land rights in many cases, it's just hard to change. And so it'd be helpful to understand, what do we need to have locked in that is pretty immovable versus other things that I can imagine we will have some more flexibility on? Right? We had conversations even about like enforcement in, you know, private but public spaces, right? Or on private, public spaces that are private property, like restaurant parking lot, right? We've talked about that as part of the, so there's some things that are a little more malleable versus some other, the property rights things and zoning is more restrictive.
Correct. I mean, we have, we have to make sure that those people have a choice.
That is right.
Like, I'll give you a good example, the American Legion, they've got a sign out there, nothing on, anywhere on the premises. So, I mean, it's just one example. Maybe there's a, a business that says, yeah, use the parking lot, there's that kind of thing. And so there has to be a choice. I want to make sure everybody has that opportunity.
I think even one of the like really high-level questions, and this would help us gauge where you're at, you know, so you have to provide a minimum of one retail space for every twelve thousand five hundred people you have here. Do you want to stay at that minimum or do you want to go well beyond that? You know, that's kind of, that range question, I think, that, you know, that's kind of something to maybe be thinking about before we meet is, as far as how open to this you want to be.
On that topic, I, there was some discussion, there was some discussion in more public media coverage of a couple of cities saying, okay, we're required to have at least one, but it's going to be the city? Has that taken any footprint or is that kind of been a, an item that was considered and cities have come off of that?
Yeah, so that was addressed this year in, at the legislature and the, if a city chooses to open a municipal store, it does not count against the required one.
So we can't be a monopoly.
Yeah, so if we wanted to do that, and spoiler, I will be strongly recommending that we do not open a municipal cannabis store.
Thank you.
There are, so, and it's just not an industry that you want to get into unless you actually want to be in the industry. And I think a lot of cities, we're looking at it as a way to avoid allowing a private, you know, just a private store in the, in the city. That's not a great reason to open a cannabis store, frankly, a municipal cannabis store. The, the cost is incredible, just the logistics are, you'll learn all about this in my fun little presentation. And so I have a feeling I want you to convince you of that. I think you'll be very convinced by the end of the presentation.
It does, that's, that question though, it just seems like, well, just tell them us how many you're comfortable with. That's challenging because we don't have limits on our numbers. Some cities will limit, you know, number of tobacco licenses or, and we don't do that, so.
And maybe it's, it's a yes or no, do you want to have limits or not? That's maybe the way I should have said it, right? Like, do you want to just do the minimum or not, like you don't for alcohol and tobacco? And you don't need to answer tonight, I'm just, I, I think we're going to have to start really high level to get you down to the details.
But is there not a, a number of, restricted number of alcohol?
No.
No, it's, it's open? I thought there was only so, so many.
Are we limiting our number?
You can adopt limits, I think, but I don't believe you have them in your code.
We don't have anything to add.
Right. That's all for me.
We're not providing a lot of feedback, but, I, I, I mean, just to that question, I'm going to...
I don't think we need it.
Well, I'm going to lean more towards, I, I'll lean more towards free market of like, we don't need to limit the number, but free market as limited by zoning, right? So then I would think that there are certainly certain zones that we would not want to see or certain requirements of that experience that we might want to lean on. But, you know, as a restriction, it's legal and I, we're just going to wrap our heads around it's legal and then it's, how do we do it the best way for us, so.
If it helps, the state is limiting the number of licenses that they will issue between now or January twenty twenty-five and July of twenty twenty-six. So there is a significant limit on the number because they are concerned about market, you know, oversaturation and so they're trying to sort of put in some controls to prevent that from happening.
Well, we look forward to cannabis one oh one.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Can I follow that up, Dave?
Dave, you got it, what do you have?
I don't know how to follow that. A few updates, weed harvest starts next Monday, so that'll, that'll start on Third Lake. They alternate starting every year, so last year we started on First Lake and work east. This year we'll start on Third Lake and work west, so look for calls on that. If we don't do dock cleaning, we follow the DNR scale or anything, you get requests to send them along to me and I can talk to the residents about that. Few Belts Park updates, getting some middles and contracts signed for the court rehab, so that's well on its way, waiting for the counter offer from the church for the parking agreements. I haven't heard back from them yet. May have noticed the water puddle that's kind of by the old baseball field. That was, we harvested the ag lime last fall in preparation for that reconstruction of the park. So it was purposely left low because when they masqueraded the park, they would have filled that back in, it would have, the contours would have changed. That didn't happen, so once the water gets out of there, we will adding topsoil and seed and getting it back to normal grass. So, and the last one at Belts is, you might also see in the orange jersey barriers up by the playground, the slide got severely damaged in about April. We've been working with the vendor to try to find a slide. It's the age of that playground, they don't make that slide anymore and they're actually trying to find a different type of feature that they could maybe retrofit in there, but they couldn't find one that you wouldn't end up having to drill holes into the existing and that kind of, it's not taking your warranty away, but it's basically not making it safety compliant because you're adding, you're putting holes in the playground. So we did find a railing that we will install. Those jersey barriers will go away, we left them there because there's a foundation for the slide, just in case we had found that slide, but public works will remove that and get rid of those. Two orange things, the downside is it's probably twelve to thirteen weeks to get that railing, so it'll kind of be boarded up, up until then. They can still use it as just a sheet of plywood in there and, and fasten it off so nobody falls off that side. But if you get any questions on that, that's what's happening there. Finally, arts in the park tomorrow night, we're going to give her a go again. Eighty degrees and full sunshine is what the weather forecast says tomorrow at six, so hopefully it'll be a, a little bit better than, than last week. Live music starts at six thirty, there's sixty-five vendors and about twelve or fifteen food trucks, so come on down and have some fun down at Lakeside Park. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just a few updates. The local street project is, been working down in the South U development area by the South Water Tower. A lot of work that's been going on there is the concrete curb and gutter replacements, spa repairs and then storm sewer repairs that are underground, so things will look like they're moving a lot faster now by the end of the week when they start doing some pavement removals and getting that prepped for the base course pavement down there and then they'll eventually move down this week, down to one eighty-fourth and then about three weeks we'll be up here by the Dressel, tired iron area and then continue out to the east. County State Highway thirty-three or Everton Avenue, the Washington County project, today they closed Nineteenth Streets, that intersection Nineteenth and Everton. They got until Saturday to reopen that after Saturday work, so we'll have some water main work going on in there starting tomorrow. Residents have been notified last week that the shutdown will occur tomorrow. And then once that's done, then everything else above it will continue to be pulled through that intersection that way, then it'll be opened up with the next phase of the project. Some great news, we were successful on obtaining another twenty-seven thousand dollars from the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-six water efficiency grants. So that'll be eligible money to continue that program starting July first. Again, that'll then go towards applications submitted for replacement of high-efficiency washing machines, low-flow toilets, high-efficiency dishwashers and irrigation components and irrigation control controllers. So it's a good program, reduces our water consumption on replacing some of the older models and moving forward, so a number of years have gone that way now. That's what I got, unless you have any questions.
Questions for you?
All right. Thanks, Ryan.
Chief?
Mayor and council, I have a couple of updates for you today. Tomorrow, safety camp at the city center here, it'll be hosted in the fire department. We kick off with a bike rodeo at eight in the, eight in the morning for bike safety and that continues throughout the day with a bunch of events. We have about fifty kids, which is the allotment that they had for safety camp this year and hopefully the rain isn't too, too bad tomorrow. The second update is more of a kudos for Forest Lake PD. On Friday, June seventh, we were called out for a structure fire in Forest Lake at one PM. When the call came in, fire was visible, fire and smoke were visible from exterior of a structure, several calls came in. Due to Forest Lake's quick response, they used four or five fireworks extinguishers and actually knocked the fire down. So what could have been a significant loss fire was actually a minor fire. Forest Lake Hugo Scandia were on scene for about an hour and then we cleared, so kudos for them for quick action, quick response and, and a good fire knocked down.
Very nice. Wonderful to hear. Thank you, chief.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to council updates. We'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
Nothing to see there.
Council... Councilmember Valento.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Hossack?
I don't have anything tonight either.
Just a quick update for me, and maybe something for council to have on radar. We had our EDA meeting this evening. One of the discussion topics that we had was consideration of, and some, asking for some policy feedback on what do we want to do with the affordable housing grant money that we are receiving from the state? And receiving from the state as in, we are getting just a little north of two hundred thousand dollars annually, starting yet this year. And we have an option to, we have three years to spend that money, so we have some time to decide how we're going to use those funds. What is concerning to me is that we cannot use any of that money for administration. So, anything that we want to do to administer any of the programs to give away that money or to use that money, needs to be funded from the city, which is just really unfortunate and, and challenging, right? You know, if you're going to have a grant program or any sort of a program to use those dollars, we want, we need to administer that well. And so, staff's looking at some options. We provided, as an EDA, some feedback. There are some opportunities perhaps to partner with the county, partner with others to kind of share some of those administrative costs, so that each city isn't doing their own. But it's a big hole that we've really got to, I feel, solve for before we start getting too far into what are we going to do with the dollars? Because regardless of what we're going to do with the dollars, we need to make sure that we have, you know, administered them appropriately and awarded those dollars appropriately. So, just, staff's also getting feedback from the Planning Commission, that ultimately will also come here to council, but just something to have on your radar, as we are the recipients of those funds, and they're coming straight from the state. It's just kind of this question of, not just what, but how are we going to manage those? So, that is the end of my update, and that is the plan, end of our planned agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.